We're going to proceed with the CBA meeting tonight for 2025, 2023. We have a quorum of four people and I know that has one of the applicants filed a quorum of five. So I'm not sure whether or not four is going to be.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Tony, it's Hunter. I don't know if you could hear me, but I'm here.
Yes, sir. I can hear you. Can you hear us?
I am on the call.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. You made my day. So we're going to proceed with the agenda. When we reach the second item on the agenda, we'll determine whether or not we want to do that much more quorum of four people if you want to go with time. But for the time being, we'll go back to the beginning of the agenda and go forward. My name is Tony Frankelachia, CBA for October 25, 2022. Just a quick overview, what we do is listen to new business, listen to the applications, further through the Cs. We go through the applications, they're asked to come up, sign in, present their application, and then basically turn them into a question and answer session in the business portion of the meeting. Once we close the hearing on that portion of the meeting, we'll ask for comment, favorite, comment, and opposition, stand, comment, and we'll close that application. We'll go into old business after we review all the items on the first part of the agenda. In the business, we'll go into old business and build on the application that we're in. If you have anything to say, it should be stated in the beginning of the meeting, in the first part of the meeting. Because once we go into old business, we can't accept any new information who we work. So if there's anything that needs to be brought out of the open, perhaps we've done that in the business portion, maybe given the question. Any questions? If not, who was the first application? This application is. Sure, I'm sorry.
Chairman Frankelachia.
Here.
Absent, Ryan Madison. Christine Mizada. Corey Whiteside.
Here.
Brian Zellig.
Here.
And then Hunter Mathino.
Here. Here.
Hunter is remote, and Ryan and Hunter, if seated, would make a quorum of four.
Correct. Any other?
Oh, yes, you need to see the alternates.
Oh, Brian. We're going to go ahead and see Brian and Hunter. Brian, so, Hunter, Mathino. First application, CBA 2022-12, 797 Farming Avenue, 9-1, Block 28, Block 31B. Alan Secundin, Secundin, requesting a modification to the alcoholic coverage of location approval. To a restaurant with patio liquor permit, according to regulations, 11B, property to zone. I don't think there's anyone here to speak to this application. This application was extended from last month. Is anyone here speak to the application? For 797 Farming Avenue? Going once, twice? So. Maureen, I know that we have this extended, we can't extend it any longer, I believe.
I would suggest that the applicant has been unresponsive to our emails and communication from staff. And as far as we know, notice the abiding property owners and/or set a sign for the public hearing that the board denied the application without open close and denied the application without prejudice. So that they're ready to be refined, they can come without having any time.
Okay. What's your question? Close it now or close it after? I move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
On my favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, so, okay, so move. The application is closed. Application, CBA 2022-09, 266 Lower Lane, 15-3, Block 91, Lot 70. Joseph Ranillo, dealing for bronze zoning regulations, 15A1. Determination of the town planner, running enforcement officer regarding number of dwelling units included at the existing house in the R11 zone, over 628, 2022, continued from 719, 2022, and 925, 2022, maybe. Thinking for the application.
Chairman, members of the commission attorney, Tom Harvey, representing the owners of 266 Lower Lane. I, we have an extensive record here. I'm not going to rehash all of them, but Mr. Giuliano would just like to make a statement and then I'll make a five-second finish and then.
You're okay with a quorum of four?
Yeah, we've agreed. We're going to, we can move forward. I do it, a practical, 266 Lower Lane, I'll see when the owners of property. I just want to make a quick statement, three quick, in regards to some of the comments, some of the discussion that was had at the last year that we were attending in the 20th of August. You know, I just want to, for the record, run a span, a couple of comments made by Maureen on behalf of the town. One of the things that she stated, when I asked, you know, why the tax assessor and fire marshal been calling it a three-family house since the initial, when we purchased back, whatever, we just had fire marshal do inspections, he called, he had us do some modifications by town, by fire marshal, by code, three families already have to have certain regulations and be working the fire marshal and making those changes. So all that was done at our cost against three family. And the comment was that, you know, the past tax assessor and fire marshal have called it a three family, so last 20 or plus years since, even before, it was it was, well, that's the right word, since it was proposed to change in the subdivision. And so the comment was that, when I asked that, it was like, most likely, it said, the town assessors and fire marshal calling family, did they report on what they seen in the field? Okay, so what they see to build is a three family. Okay, so I believe in the most likely scenario is that whoever designed subdivision did not actually look at the subject, at that house itself, or go back in the land records, it stated as a three family. They most likely looked at, I believe, in the, in the, it's R11, a two-family zone. But the house initially was built in 1940 something, and the earlier land records, 1956, stated as a three-family house. So I believe that whoever designed the field, the subdivision never really looked at those old records and just said, okay, the town record says it's in a two-family zone, that's where we're going. Okay, so. And the fact that it was a three-family, it was overlooked on, on the application for the subdivision. Nothing in the town records from, from that subdivision process indicate or state where there was abandoned, you know, as it was stated that it was been an abandoned three-family house. There's no written record, there's no notification, there's nothing in the town records stating that. Other, other than on the subdivision, a two-family house was, was put, or indication it was a two-family house. There's nothing, no records that indicate, and unfortunately, the subdivision person who did it has passed away. So there's no records, and we can't get information. Nothing in the, in the town records from that, indicate that it was stated was an abandoned three-family house. It was overlooked by, the town, was overlooked, that it states a two-family to the three-family, just like the field cards were overlooked. And for the record, field cards, up until, up until 20, early 2022, or whatever exact date, always stated it as a three-family house. And then, and I believe it was February in that time range, it was changed on the field cards to a two-family. But for the last 20-plus years, it's always been a three-family. And as far as, there was another comment made about us challenging a two-family versus a three-family back in 2018, 2019, when we had a electrical permit pulled, we had an owner's meter put in, and the permit was pulled by the electric contractor, not by us. And I've spoken with other contractors, and typically, the information that is used in the permit process is pulled from the field cards. Back in 2018, 2019, the field cards clearly stated it was a three-family house. So why would I challenge, or us, the owners, or even that, challenge it, that it was, it was stated it was a two-family? As far as I understand, when you do the permit process, nobody really goes to land records. And that's the only place, is that one subdivision land records that stated that it was a two-family. Everything else has always been stated that it's a three-family. And that's done by the fire marshal, by the tax assessors, and we've been being accessed on it since three families. Since we've owned it, I should say. So as far as I understand it, it's never been abandoned. We never went to two-family, it was never, the person who did the subdivision, one of the owners at the time, actually lived on the third floor. So I just want to make that clear, that, you know, there's just, there's no information that it was ever a two-family, that any of the day-to-day operations, which is usually how field card. So I just want to make that clear, that we couldn't, we couldn't, you know, was brought up that we should have challenged it back in 2018, 2019. I don't know how we would have known that it was, you know, during the permitting process, that it was in the land records, and it's, it's a two-family. Town records, town assessor, fire marshal, and some of the other people from town I spoke to always known as a three-family house. So how it got missed, I don't know. But the fact is that we bought it as a three-family, town records, field cards, and all that, so it's a three-family. So we, we, we would like to continue as a three-family house, and that's, we're here asking for it. Thank you.
Without, you know, rehashing the record with the consent of here. This is a house that's been a three-family for 82 years, or thereabouts. The one in the pre-dated zone, we talked about this, I was here. But 8-2 of the Connecticut general statutes controls us, who I, before I caution this and say her well. I think the house, the planer's position is, oh, you waived it by filing a plan that said it's a two-family. Whether or not, when that was drafted by the engineer, he realized that the 8-2 of the general statutes even existed and protected the use at that time, three-family, we'll never know. But if you look at it one more time, 8-2, just the, the middle portion of said regulation, being your regulations to not terminate or deem abandoned in non-conforming use, I don't think there's any debate that this is non-conforming use. Building a structure, unless a property owner of the said use building a structure voluntarily discontinues such use. The planner's saying, well, there you go, you put out, you put out, if you put two family, you voluntarily discontinue. But let's read the next sentence. Building or structure is such discontinuance as accompanied by an intent not to reestablish such use or building or structure. The entire record, one of the owners continued to live there, by my recollection, I believe, a couple of years afterwards. There's no evidence it was ever a two-family until we got in, we went to sell it, had the three-family, and they wanted, they, I guess, only a peonier layer, and here we are, fit up. So based on the statute, based on the record, and just fundamental fairness, it seems to me that the player was in very courteous, by the way. Her opinion should be, I guess she's the fact that a zoning enforcement officer should be reversed into the property that we maintain as a legal, non-conforming three-family. Thank you for your time, and.
Attorney Harvey, before you step away, can I just ask you one question?
Sure.
I, I've been just observing.
Okay.
Because I was standing on counsel to the board, in this circumstance, Miss Juicy elected not to have a home council. Because we know this is an appeal. What, what just stands out to me again is, is we have this survey plan that was filed on the land records. When your client bought the property, did they not do a title search?
You know what happens, especially today, you send out searchers, they, they look at the index, they're looking at the mortgages, and they actually go, I mean, you have to keep one thing in mind. The lot that was cut out was conforming, the lot that remained is conforming as to the R11 zone. It's the use that we're concerned about. And even if I'm a, other than coming to the planner, I would say, well, look at this, this is 1940, this is non-conforming use, it's protected by 8-2, I don't think, I don't know, I didn't do it. When I picked it up, we might have hired a searcher, who wouldn't have ever even looked at it? Because you're more concerned about this. Not a title issue for a site, the title here is not so. Not, that meant would be of interest, but it wouldn't, to me, constitute a waiver of the right to continue the use, especially when what happened afterwards, it was sold, the first time it's a three-family. The town, the taxes, everybody, except the planner thinks it's a three-family, and I, I hope the board will, wants to see that one.
So, so you don't know if the title search picked up the map?
Let's assume they did. So what do you do? You call, you look, oh, look, it was built in 1940. Oh, look at 8-2, the title statutes. Oh, look at the, the index, the assessors guys. Well, it's a three-family, well, this one just closes, it's a three-family, no problem. Did they go to the planner? What's happened in the last few years, I'd say in the last eight or 10 years, even the more municipal searches, the banks was zoning, zoning letters from the planner, or from the zoning, from the zoning enforcement officer, and that's what triggered this all.
So that's an important point, just to explain what he means, okay? What we're moving towards is a full municipal search when somebody's closing on a property. So typically, in the old days, title searcher would only look at the land records. But now, what's become the standard is that they do a full municipal search, meaning they go into different departments in town, they'll go into building, are there any outstanding, or is this a violation of orders to obey, or open permits? They'll go into zoning, we'll check the same thing, any enforcement actions against the property. You know, they, they look to see what are the approvals on the property. And, and so we, you know, they may check with the fire marshal, they of course always go to the tax collector to see if there's outstanding taxes. So what attorneys, private ones representing, and I fully agree, is, you know, we've shifted from just doing the land record search as being the standard for title searchers to something much broader, to pick up, you know, any issues that there may be with regard to title and use and so on and so forth. And, you know, the shift has been principally, of course, you know, motivated by the insurance companies to make sure that they're discovering any issues before they're issuing the title policy on the property. That's a fair representation, for you, Attorney Harvey. So what he's indicating, again, I think, in answer to my question, is he doesn't know whether or not they actually picked up this reported map that was signed, you know, by the members of the planning and zoning. Yeah, it looks like it was signed by the chairman, and potentially other members of planning and zoning. There's other signatures there, it looks like there's, back in 96. When you, so, you know, that's, I think, the important piece of this. But obviously, the board understands that what we've always required on, on an application to planning and zoning, and certainly, there are reasons why, for this particular type of application, that the approval is reflective of, the approval is reflective of, in terms of type of approval, the authority of the owner of the property to submit the application. So, you know, they were hired by the owner of the property, submit the application on their behalf, and this application was approved, and this is a recorded document. So, you know, again, I know that you understand what's represented in that document as a two-family use for the structure that we're talking about at that time, so. Or certainly, it's proposed to be a two-family who's going forward. Go ahead, yeah.
Sorry. She's talking about one piece of paper, and gave, and did this, nobody made a mistake, for which we're being asked to pay the price. My view, as a lawyer, reading the statute, reading the cases, I don't think it matters. They could afford a one-family, N-family, the statute protected that's use. And that's pretty much the end of it, especially where, even after the hearing, you can say, well, it was a two-family thereafter, you're stuck with that, they continue to use it as a three-family, and the statute provides for that. There's no evidence that they ever ended or discontinued the use after the group. It's only for, sort of, for the sake of writing it, that I think that map reads anything. I don't think it means anything, in the big context of the statute. You're recalling, if you will, no, we have minutes, we don't have, I mean, there's a tape, I haven't listened to the tape, I read, read, read it on mortgage. Who knows? But see, relatively generic, the minutes of the meeting are, you know, I think in five minutes. There's no staff comments, you know, how many times you have a subdivision where the staff doesn't allow to be, they have free plan meeting? There's nothing here, but now, armed time behind their back for reasons that are supposed at this stage under, are not anybody's responsibility. But I think if you read the statute in the total context of the record and the evidence, that it's clearly, it's been continued and needs to be continued, and I don't think that's it. Well, if you have any questions? Field cards, we, we talked about that.
So, yeah, just, just with regards to the field cards, they, they, they understand what role those play. They understand that, you know, when, when they're going out to tax improvements, they're looking at the improvements that exist in the field. That's not determinative, you know, in terms of what's allowed pursuant to be zoning. And, and they've had other applications with, with regard to, you know, what's the content is as far as the field cards are concerned. They understand what the law is on that, and you're not disagreeing with that. You're making an argument that, you know, that's some evidence towards the use. And they understand that, I think.
There's another card here that Mr. Zellig brought up, the field card. And it's David 7.97, and shows four living units. On the, this is the card that's used. The whole, the, I read that. Four living units. 1997.
Unit four. Yes, I didn't keep a card represent. That's mine.
I saw the building, it was one water line. Going into it. There's three meters, owner's meter.
Three total meters, one of them being.
Well, four total.
Four.
Four total, should be four. And there was a permit I given for that.
That was Mr. Giuliano, General Director, responded, just for the benefit of.
Yeah, it's.
Our clerk.
All right, it's four meters, one owner's meter. Each, each individual unit has its own meter, which has been in existence, you can tell by the age you know it's metered way before us. It's, it has three separate water heaters, it has three separate washer and dry hookups. It has, you know, so each unit has its own bathroom, obviously, and bedrooms, only three separate kitchens, all prior to.
They know the permit taken off, they were three meters.
We don't know, it was wired, that we had asked, and we don't know, but I, I, I had asked a question before, and I had called, actually, the, the time, a resource now, but they don't have the records. If they had a record, and their comment was that town should have. But now, again, when the meters were installed, I'm not sure if permits were pulled, I mean, it could be, because the house was built in 46. So I don't know if, so it was before that, it was before that. So I don't know if the, if the meters were that, you know, that old or not. We add an additional owner's meter, because of, that's what we're supposed to do. And so we added a fourth meter, but the three original meters, they have three separate.
What did you add, the fourth meter?
2018, 2019.
You got a permit for that?
Yes. Just one other, one other quick comment, I'm sorry.
Frank Julian. Uh, just sort of. Just for, for record purposes, there are three separate addresses, right and back addresses for all three units. Right, hallway, back hallway, each one has a separate address to the hallways. Is there any, uh? I thought of that. Why this was, was the, uh, four with.
I did not search out that for. Um. Yeah, good one, I traded on the three and that. Um, I don't recall searching into or asking the assessor if he had any further notes on that. Uh, we did go through, um, many of his notes and the files he provided. But I believe that's the only one that says it's for, I was just looking for my notes with regard to the, um. The owner's heater, because I recall specifically stating it had to be an owner's heater. Because there was no evidence that three families were legitimate. Um, I thought we had a notation that it would be third meter, uh, a fourth meter that was being installed, so I'm actually. Looking for that now.
Just.
Um, but.
Just, just.
I want to recall correctly, so.
Just for the record, we did provide pictures showing four meters. For the record, the three, the one kind of box and then the separate other corner. So that was provided by for the records and it was in the packet at some point. There and there. So there were four meters.
It, it's, um, provides the complaint, it's not whether it is for there or not, it's whether or not. The zoning office, what number of meters the zoning office was aware of at the time that they signed off on the. And I signed off on the owner's heater.
What?
The other.
Would the building department sign off on that for the permit?
The building department routes permits to the zoning office to sign up for zoning purposes. And they ultimately issued the permit.
Building department issued permits.
Issued a permit for a meter in.
An orange meter.
Which he's saying the fourth meter, I. I believe all of it, or, you know, like my notes show it was a third meter.
Well, they only, they only kind of asked me, it's, the building department knew that there was three meters there. And there was a fourth meter being installed, that kind of like, uh.
It's more, it's more likely and, and again. An assumption, but it's more likely that the application was a request for an owner's meter, which we do allow. So they would look to see. How many were already there versus just whether or not an owner's meter would be allowed either.
Yeah.
Another meter, they're just checking for it's.
The permit for the owner's meter that's not here, right?
Um, I believe it is. That's what I was looking for.
But the permit process, most likely. The town would look at the field card, which states it as a three family, which would have two meters on there. So if they went out and did the final inspection. They would see that it had three separate meters, three, it's actually has four electrical boxes. So if, if the permit was issued, they did the inspections, they should have, they would have seen that. And we clearly show in the pictures that there's three meters together and the fourth meter around the corner.
The. Goodness of my knowledge, the building inspectors don't look at the assessors' cards and they rely on zoning for the purposes of what's allowed.
Yeah, that's a question. So when you have looked at the land records, would it be a, a big field card?
Zoning did an extensive search as described in the letter I had written to, um. To you and your attorney, um, with regard to looking at the field guys, looking at the land records. Um, we were asked, so a little background and simplicity of the whole thing. We were asked to, um, provide a zoning compliance statement that this was a three family dwelling for the purposes of a sale. Um, that is a typical request and the initial start, search starts with the. Um, well, any records we have in our office, the, or the land records. And one of the very preliminary documents I pulled up was the map that stated it was a two family. For this purposes of the subdivision. So that then prompted. Further digging, um, and I had pulled, as shown in the record. Um, the assessors' cards that we down in the assessors' office all the time, we actually have access to their. Current record, um, in our office, um, because of the amount of time we go look at them. However, that is what is found on site, not a. Zoning review, what they find is what they find for evaluation purposes. Um, so I feel my search was extensive, I found a land record document, which is. An application for planning and zoning permission. Prompted and made by the owner of the property at that time. Um, which that application was showing a two family house. Um, I don't know that there would have been investigation as to any non-conformity or any questions with regards to non-conformity at that time, time because. The application. Um, the signed application and related materials have been stated as a two family. Who would be looking for a non-conformity if no one pointed out there was a non-conformity? It, and it apparently was not discussed, so my, um. Response to that is the owners are ultimately responsible for their applications and their permits. And if they hired professionals that have misrepresented, um. It should have minimum be corrected on the record at a public hearing. Or at a meeting, um, and be clear of what's.
For the permit process though. Nobody will get the land records at that point. We put the owner's meter in. No later, then the land records came up recently since we tried to sell it back in December. When we pulled a permit where it wasn't. We, we, it was in the contract, the contract that pulled the permit. Okay, there was no indication, there's no documentation anywhere saying that it had been changed from a three family to a two family. Other than on that land records, I understand that, but we never discontinued use, when we pulled that. I'd say we, the electrician pulled that permit, it was never, never discussed that it was a two family. Because most likely, as most permit, permits are, are issued, they usually go up with field card, field card said it was a three family. So the, the research, and I understand that just recently has come up with, with the land records. But back then it was pulled two thousand eighteen and you stated that we should, we should have questioned it then, why? There was no indication that there was, that there was something done with the. With the land records, all our field records, field cards, which specifically used for the information, hold on a permit. Is all stated it was a three family. Back in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, I don't remember the exact date, so I apologize, I don't have that. But it was, it was field card said it was a three family. Fire marshal for the last four years has been working with us because field card says it's a three family. If it was changed back in two thousand and seven or twenty nine, the field card should have been addressed back then. Field card would just change this, this year. Field cards, which is a legal document too, that's, that's what it's representing. What superses nothing, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not a legal authority, so I'm not going to question that. Positive record, okay, but I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's still a record that, that's what we went and had a name to our attorney's. Arnie's point, if it was brought up back then, so we questioned it, well, here's documentation, it says it's a three family. That's what we bought, that's what our real estate people we purchased it with. Is here, and she's the one who did the initial research and it was a three family, it was listed as a three family. And it's always been used as a three family. When was that permit taken out? What date?
So either it was twenty eight. So it was issued on December nineteen, twenty eight.
So essentially this thing over here, this, uh, this, uh, this was printed on December. Fourth, twenty eighteen. And it shows.
Which is why it made the notation, um, on the.
It shows three family.
Adding, that's why we made the notation adding owner's channel, channel and meter. And front and rear ad, like, all the, like, this is for an owner's meter, not for.
Right, but I think.
But that's not.
I don't know if they looked at this, because this was, this was printed the same, same timeframe.
Yes, it was printed the same, same timeframe, I know it's inside that.
You know.
Trial holder indicated that, um, I discussed with. Whoever was representing that permit application, that any claim for a three family would have to be. Presented and brought back to plan, to the zoning department. We weren't denying an owner's meter, but we were saying that we're not accepting a claim of three family from the zoning standpoint at that time. He didn't ask for any, uh, confirmation that it was a three family. And we did not do that research at that point.
Yes, there, there was always, you know, confirmation as a two family and it went by with the records.
So again, I relied upon the, um, we don't rely on the assessors' card because it is what they find. That does not mean it's what is allowed by zoning finds. Things, or rather, the assessor may find things regularly that may or may not be permitted. Um, and we work, we rectify them as we can, as we can, as they are called to our attention. However, um. The land records is something that is relied upon because it's a legal filing on the land records. With the consent of the owner and, um. And in this case was done in relation to an application made to planning and zoning permission. And a representation made to planning and zoning permission by them.
Can I just ask some question? In terms of the water service, there was a comment that was made and I, you know, I have reviewed all the documents too long. There was a comment made about there being separate water service. For, for each of the clean units, but you have notes about that not being the case. Could you just explain that so that they understand that too? Because that provision of use is what this is important to. You had a notation about that.
Rachel, I'll, I'll be for water service too, so that actually was, um. The. Right, Carol, Carol, the previous zoning enforcement officer, um, contacted the Worthington Fire District, which is where this house is situated. Before they do fire district, not for water control. And they stated they have only one water service with the address. They have, um. They sent an email dated January twenty eighth.
Kind of, uh, do you have water units that are separate with the water line? Why don't I go, why don't I go into the house one, with power and all that individually for the, for the hot water? And for the, uh, because it's electric, hot water, so each one has its own unit that's powered through electrical box. But one of the things I just want to bring up that. You don't have natural gas, do you? There is, but it's not, it's not, we have one stove that has the, that has natural, that one floor has, third floor has a natural gas stove, but all the. Hot water heaters are all electric. Just one quick thing here too, uh. This is an electrical permit that was pulled by a town. So one of the things I hear says lights to be motion activated. Or photocell per fire marshal. Okay, I saw that. That. Fire marshal according to is states that regulations, again, I apologize, regulations. Fire code, thank you, states that in a three family house, you need to have that. Okay, so the permit was issued because of fire marshal required. A three family house, you don't need that in a two family house. We have other two family house properties in town and we had the same discussion with, with, um.
Steve Wozniak.
Steve Wozniak, and he says it's not required in two families, only required on a three family or above. Okay, in the permit process, on the permit, it states that fire marshal required photocell or cell activating. I don't think it's on the permit. If that doesn't say that it's, it's, it's the existing three family house. Yeah, anyway.
We have, we have that.
So, yeah, that, I believe it's number fifty. But the.
Yeah, I saw that.
The fire marshal, if I may, is charged with inspecting what exists as well. So it leaves, there's three family each, my understanding, and I get them. I'm not the fire marshal, I don't enforce this code, but my understanding from operations of him is that he's got to deal with health and safety for what is. Whether it's legal or not. You know, he's, he's going out making sure that if, if the unit's a three, he's. He's making sure it has the requirements for a three. I'm getting the zoning office. Oh, sorry, that was the other one.
I think it's eight.
Again, we have the list, is that the beginning of all this? Seems so organized when I'm putting these things together that you couldn't be able to follow, I think. For that, and we. Probably a bit nineteen, probably nineteen.
Nineteen.
Yeah, exhibit number nine.
That's electrical, huh?
That's one you're at for, correct?
No, no, the one where it mentions the photo electric, whatever.
The photocell for the fire marshal is on that.
Which one?
Number nineteen, exhibit nineteen.
Oh, yeah, lights, motion activated or moves over fire marshal.
That's attorney Harvey also submitted a packet that was.
This is, uh, this, this was a given, this is a issue twelve nineteen, two thousand eighteen. Application date eleven point seven, uh. Uh, the question I'm asking, if that was applied for in eleven point seven and issued on twelve nineteen. And that card was printed out on twelve four, did they go by that card and say it was a three family and that's, yeah, you do need a, an owner's meter? Because you don't need an owner's meter for two family. Why would you put in another?
My understanding is only meters are used when the advocate asks for it. You know.
Right, 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 right.
Ask for one.
But, and, and from a, from a technical point of view, if you have a two family house, would you, uh, go ahead and put in an owner's meter? Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, if you would put an owner's meter in just to take care of the lights on the back porch. That doesn't make any sense because you're going to end up paying a million pounds of dollars, you go out of town, it'll only take twenty years to pay it back. Doesn't make any sense at all. You know, nobody would do that in their mind. And, and this is eleven twenty, so, what was it, eleven twenty? Seven. Application date, the application date eleven twenty seven, that thing was printed on twelve four and that thing was issued on twelve nineteen, twelve eighteen. So I'm thinking like fire marshal went back and looked at it and said, yeah, this is a three family, you got to put an owner's meter in. And, and, you know, I, 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 I'm just looking at it that way, I think. You know, I, I'm, I'm not trying to be a smart aleck here, but. It seems to rhyme, everything seems to rhyme. Somehow they had that listed as a three family. And they continued to listen to the three family until somebody quoted, but you know, this has been a three family zone. But I don't know, it's grandfathered in.
We're supposed to decide if the use was abandoned, right? That's our.
Well, technically. Supposed to decide whether there's enough evidence to overturn the zoning enforcement officer decision. Well, was it abandoned or was it not abandoned? The decision because it was abandoned? The decision was going to be able to abandon, but if it was not abandoned, then, uh, I don't, yeah.
That's a question that I think the case of practice chooses. Is that, you know. The summation of, uh.
Yeah, well, the three family use abandoned.
My decision would be, I'm sorry.
It's your notice here.
It's a, this, the decision of my decision letter.
Yeah.
Regarding to the advocacy which was addressed to, um, attorney Harvey.
You don't have your.
Earlier.
Here with the original letters.
It's people that kind, we were not the original.
His office has determined that two family use was established while having the approved subdivision patent. That happened. Still a high quality.
So it has the, this, I'm not sure. I mean, it's believable, but it has, um, the, yeah, please, we're not doing. Two sixes, it's really thirty five, I think, that's less at, at the top page, but it's fifty six pages long. It's where exhibit nineteen was, it's at the end of that packing.
A U D. The A U D's passed away, sold the business. I think all the gravel was extracted from the property. There's no, I don't think I can be all out of there on this alternate. Presenting all the gravel out. My clients bought the property in April of two thousand nineteen. They want it as is, and there were still some construction equipment there from the A U D's. They want it as is. There were some trucks, dump trucks. Most of it was in front of the property, I understand. My clients thought it was okay to maintain that material, and there is some grading that has to be done because if you go inside there, the property that abuts the neighbors to the south or the east. There's some severe, kind of severe banks there because the gravel was taken out. So my clients did have, do have some property there that is going to be removed. I know there's been some. I know Maureen has spoken to my clients before. There was, we are appealing an order dated August twenty second. Seasoned assist. That's when I kind of got involved in this. I'm happy to report to my clients, unfortunately, this is the kind of thing where you need to find a place to store construction material. Those are kind of the core stepchild of every town zoning regulation. There's not a lot of properties that are suitable for this. We found one, decided that the clients are closing on the property about two weeks, two and a half weeks. It was formerly a construction yard, and we'll be able to move what's there. If it's an excavator, some trucks. There is a mobile home that was put in the back that was supposed to be used to shed. Obviously, that's going to go. My client's intention next spring is to subdivide the property. And obviously, with any violations on the property, we'll be able to subdivide. But we do have a place to move the equipment. You know, it's, it's, it's one of those things where you just can't snap your fingers and fix. Have to find a place to move things. When they bought the property, there was construction equipment there from the A U D's. Construction equipment has probably been there for a long, long time. But I'm happy to report that we do have a solution to this problem. Now, I can't say that it's going to end a month, the law will be fixed. We will be closing in about two and a half weeks. It may take a couple of months for it to. It will all be transferred. But we hope that it's still a solution that's, you know, agreeable with the neighbors also. We can understand that. You know, there've been complaints. I don't know if there were complaints when the A U D was there, but there is a few more pieces that were moved in. My clients are in the excavating business. This is a property that almost requires an excavator. It's got some severe banks where the gravel was taken out. Obviously, one more gravel taken out of this place, but for years it wasn't relevant. We do have, like I said, we do have a solution. What I'm asking for is I for my clients to apply with the order. Not saying that. You know, the property is there, but it's not the kind of thing that's easily rectified, but we do have a solution. We are asking for some time. What it has to be tabled, I don't know that it's going to be done by the next meeting, maybe a couple of months. We do intend to apply for subdivision. Early with next year. Everything will have to be rectified by then.
About this time, what do you think?
Well, it may take, we close about, just a closure on November ninth on the new property. Probably going to take another. A lot of difficulty in the career before we move everything out of there. Some of the stuff isn't easy to move. It has to be trailer power. We're just looking for some time to clean the house at the same time. There always was construction equipment there. Think about as much as there now, but there always. There's still contractors, A U D had it for that. On gravel. You can, if you go back there. The gun club is behind it. And then Burgers Nursery is also right away, Gun Club, Burgers Nursery. The right away is actually on my client's property. If you go back there, you'll see how steep the cliffs are around the property. It was because of all the gravel. So it's all out. So there is some grading where it's going to have to be done there at some point. Probably. Some bit gets approved. Obviously, not a great rating. It's like that. We are asking for some time. It's just not an easy thing. It's just not an easy thing to rectify, but we do have a solution.
So you're ready to start with the chase? Nice to see you.
Good to see you too.
So. You have, it's not really substantive. This is appeal. So they're not disputing.
Well, the equipment is there. I mean, it's always, it always had, there always had the equipment. Not saying it was not conforming, but it was relevant. It was, the gravel pit operation ceased. My clients bought it. They bought it with the equipment of the previous owner on the property. So we're asking for a lot of money, of course, until we get. This.
But this board, Grant recorded that. That has to come through the C E O. It's the C E O that's the enforcement agent of putting his own information.
Yeah, so that's what I'm asking to table. I mean, it's not the kind of thing that easily fixed. We do have a place where we can move stuff. Now, it's tough to find places to put construction materials probably where, you know, how long can we leave it open? The question I guess I have for Tony.
So. Um. If I, if I can buy the, the. This property has been the subject of an enforcement action for some time. We have to the best of our ability for to. Send orders, which we did for. And perhaps it was the previous owner of the property as well as to this current owner. And had been working with the owner. They had said that they were going to be cleaning up the property. Since the previous order was sent sometime in. Twenty twenty one, when Adam was the zoning officer, I believe he was the last one that sent out the last order. And then. When I got a complaint that there was activity yet again, I sent this final order, which is the order. Because of the timing between orders. I determined that it would be proper to send a final notice because they hadn't been making progress. That had been discussed with the owners in the mail conversations that was included in your packet. From, I believe it starts in May or early June, because I reached out directly to the owner. To discuss the fact that they hadn't been making progress and we got the complaint that. That truck's equipment and activity was there yet again. And as you can see, mail dated June tenth, will remove the trailer later today. Sorry, it took so long. So obviously, this is a continuation of our previous conversation. That conversation must have been in person or by telephone. And. The other red truck will be moved, et cetera. So I then got an update. And then went to visit the site early June and found that. It appeared as though there was more there than before, you know, and I did take additional pictures. Unfortunately, they didn't. Upload to my, I'm trying to get them again by email, by the telephone to the, to the computer now so that I can share them with the board. But they were. Not moving forward in a timely fashion since May, let alone from the year before when they were notified that they would. Should be coming into compliance. And there were this order of August twenty four was sent out. So again, I think it's urgency with regard to. Finding a place to relocate these vehicles and equipment. They, the final notice was a result of. Me, as a zoning enforcement officer, feeling that there had been ample opportunity, time to come into compliance and find a place. To put, to put the vehicles and equipment that didn't belong there. Again, I would.
Isn't there anything that could be moved?
Can't directly say. I don't think so. But we've much has been removed since we brought it here.
Yeah, we're, Mr. Chairman, we're appealing an order of August twenty fourth. That's basically when I got involved in this, so. You know, as I said, it's very difficult to find a place to put construction material. We have. I was asking. This table, it gives a type of, get this thing, and the clients have it inside of the thing that. Want to subdivide the property, they're probably going to get three lots in their subdivision situation. It's going to have to be some grading. It's, I love the back there, but it's, it's kind of a rough piece. It's, the banks are fairly steep with the gravel was actually maybe usable. I assume it was done with a permit, you know.
So I, you did not have an excavation permit for that, for the gravel.
Yeah, I don't know when they stopped all that gravel because I don't think any. Much gravel was sold out lately. It's pretty much stripped most of the boundaries when my clients acquired it. The banks were pretty steep, so assuming that we, we table this by the next meeting, we're going to table it, we want to. We can't table it. Well, we might, without permission, we probably could. But it wouldn't be considered random and denied, you know, by default. It's going to take us probably a good couple of months to get this thing cleaned up. We're not going to close for another two, three weeks. We can get this thing cleaned up. We're appealing from the order at the end of August. Yeah, with their previous discussion chart was. But we're appealing from the order, the order paid last.
Oh, the, the property purchase, which I purchased recently.
Which one? This one?
The one selling the property.
No, it's closing in November nine.
Oh, it's closing November nine.
Yeah, I know. It was a former construction yard, so we can move, we can move the material there.
Well, if I could just share that this owner. This is a twenty nineteen on your screen, twenty nineteen aerial view. It's on our G I S system. And so you have some vehicles and equipment. Container, et cetera, up near the road and some other equipment. Fairly close to the road or the other debris, I should say, up near the road. I'm not seeing any construction equipment or. Other items through the rest of the site, and this is in two thousand nineteen. You don't have to tell me you're in two thousand nineteen, but in two thousand nineteen. If we move forward to the aerial view that. On the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty two Google map, you can see. All these vehicles on the property. Just have to make sure. Hunt, Hunt already there?
Yep, I can hear again now. I just lost hearing like a minute ago, and then I text Maureen, and now it's back on.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not joining. I lost power for a moment. Thank you. On the computer. Okay, so this is the twenty twenty two aerial showing equipment here, showing equipment here, and I have some photos to share as well. We gotta share. This is the twenty twenty three that I was just sharing, shown initially. I mean, twenty twenty two. These pictures, which were taken. Since August. We, because Dylan started in August. He was a human interface victor. August twenty third, these are the pictures that prompted the final order. Because I felt that the, or I evaluated the property and determined that we had more of them than. Previously, then on the site, we have some trucks. There would be a boat down here, or we listed the. In the duck truck, gray hoop house. Black pickup truck, blue travel trailer. White object that might be a construction trailer behind the travel trailer, plenty of pipes and structures and other miscellaneous. So it's my opinion that they have not only not cleared out. Some of the vehicles and equipment they brought, but instead have, in fact, added additional. Vehicles and equipment to the property here. This is a little hard.
This is since your file, Maureen?
No, this was what prompted the.
It's since.
Having the conversations with him clearly since, the most recently since May. As evidenced in the. Email thread that was shared.
Nothing's been brought in since the final order, correct?
Right.
Although they said my clients probably run the same assumption when they purchased the property, that because there had been construction equipment stored there, they probably thought they could. Store some of their own, but now obviously that was, but now we're in a position where we can get this cleaned up. Since when I grow a little bit, if it's subdivided, they grade it out, get approved, we both apply next spring. Obviously, we can't apply with violations on the property. We're just asking for some time. It's not the kind of thing that we easily. You don't just snap your fingers and clean this up. Need a place to bring your equipment, filing out what likes to frame. We're appealing the order that was dated August twenty third. Not disputing the fact that we had other conversations, but we're taking it from August. Dated the order forward, and we're going to get it, doing our best to get it cleaned up. We're just asking for time to be able to move our stuff out of the property we're purchasing. Like then.
I did just call the other file and apologize for not having copies, but I can't send them around to share. But two of these, the current owners' orders were at, moved on the stand. Um, October. Ten, twenty nineteen. On day ten, twenty twenty one. And that for twenty twenty two order, that was the final since. Twenty. So the owners have been aware. Of the issue. And. That they all are, so. Complaints as well as subservences on the property. The, in fairness to owners, they did have an excavation order where they figured and they'd stop, they'd cease that. Activity, which was something to.
We're not appealing the previous orders. We're appealing the order of August.
It was the history of a file that, that's one of the important issues.
And we're asking for some time to. Move our equipment as appropriate.
I believe it is the. Charge of the zoning officer to determine the. The priority of, following up on orders. As opposed to the zoning board of appeals. However, it is, I understand that it would be within your purview to. Continue an item to a meeting. In accordance with the statutory timeline.
That's a good question. Question I have, I don't want to lose anyone.
So your next meeting, I just wanted to double check. That is November twenty second, so that is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
Correct.
So, and he's indicating that the closing of the Sunday's improper is occurring on November nine. Quite much, yes, I know, not quite two weeks, what we. What a grass. Also, just a reminder to this is a public hearing on all appeals of public hearings as well as various applications. So you want to make sure if there's any. Members of the public here that would like to speak to us, that you are allowed in the atmosphere to do so.
Yeah, we have to do that. That's members. People are better people.
Yeah, that's right.
But I think we got your point. I guess that gets you covered. I'll start, or that goes.
Yeah.
If we can. If we have a situation where we can. Well, we have to vote on it, but if we do, to continue it, then we're going back in November, really, so back November or. I'm guessing it's a couple of weeks enough time. I'm not sure if that's enough time for it either, but.
It probably won't be, but we'll see what we can do towards meeting the goal, but I'm not sure it's going to be completely done, but. We expect to have it done by October of the year, get it cleaned up.
But I'm not sure. This commission is actually extended again in November to December. I'm not sure this commission can do that. Unless we agree on an extension. I think that's. Is that possible?
There are extensions permitted by the G A.
Well, across that, we could. Probably.
So can I just make one observation? You know, I've done a lot of enforcement in the past twenty four years. From the photographs, and I've not gone out there, so I don't know, okay? But it's one thing to talk about moving equipment and finding a place for equipment, but there seems to be a lot of miscellaneous items here. You know, debris and some of which certainly, I think, be addressed before November nine. So could there be a commitment to the board to at least take care of the. Various.
There are some. There's some other structure related materials there. I don't know. My client's here. Yeah, it's a pet her last student, he's actually. Joe and his son, but. There are some other items there.
There are some other items, some of the lottery now, but it includes.
Uh, could you sign in? Patrick.
Patrick Karowski.
Yeah, you have to sign in.
We do have material there, I mean, pavers for sidewalks, there's leftover, with no material from all their job sites, but. That's all my father wanted to say for when he starts building this house, the sidewalk. Pallets of material we never actually returned. Because it was a very open pallet, and we're not just going to take it to a land.
Okay, some, some of the things again, those small items that we're seeing.
A lot has been cleaned up. I mean. I should have been updating pictures today, but we did clean up quite a bit. There's a lot out in the scrapyard. We'll try our best to get as much as we can done before we got that new property.
Unless the new property is very good. Yeah, we are so. Thank you.
For the board's sake, and as far as the course goes, we have generally followed the procedure that is. That if. Substantial forward progress is made, then. Orders aren't prioritized to get to the next level. You know, we want, we want compliance and we want forward progress in a timely manner, as can occur. Again, having visited the property in August, I felt at that time, I had actually seen some reverse projects. From what I had seen a year before. We have a couple of other enforcement officers that remain in place, so. I think maybe a little bit, it's not losing with my. View of the properties, but that was definitely more than the, of several years ago when I had last. Or a couple of years ago when I. Last done the main.
Are there any other questions, staff? Commission members? Hunter, you okay? Hunter, are you still there? Hunter, with Nina?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
All right, I just wanted to make sure you were still there.
Yeah. I lost audio a little bit here and there, but I'm, I'm, I'm good.
You have any questions regarding this application that is this?
I do not.
Any questions, any comments in favor of the application? Comments in favor? Comments in opposition?
Yes.
Yeah, come on up, sign in please, and. You can sign in, use the microphone. Usually ask for comments, opposition, comments in favor, comments in favor in a way, but. Public comments that we're. Trying to do during the. First portion of the meeting, the business portion of the meeting.
My name is Robert Bullock. Seven oh six Chandler Island. With my wife, we've been residents there for possibly thirty years. We've ordered to go up here and down and schools. The property where our house is, it's been in my wife's family for. I don't know, maybe seventy or eighty years. We're dealing with that property. Passed down through generations to siblings and whatnot. So we've been there for a while. We were there when A U D owned it. My understanding back then that A U D was under the order not to. Put any more construction equipment in the, in the, in the gravel pit. And it was that way. He had, there was a few pieces that he left. The African. It's been part of their deal when they bought the property. I applaud the idea with Attorney Pento that it's going to be cleaned up. It kind of a rough flow there for us. Respect to living in a residential area and seeing what we thought was commercial use. On the property itself. I think today I would feel a lot better. My wife would as well. If we leave here today, we would want some assurance, and I agree with Attorney Pento, that slope is rather steep. My feeling had, with a little construction knowledge that I had, that it was somewhat of a two to one slope, and I think that's what is required by the, by zoning. We'd like to have some assurance by the board or by Attorney Pento that that slope will not be compromised anymore. That will be stabilized. So it doesn't affect, potentially affect our property, which is adjacent to the south. Yeah, it's the long driveway there. I've set one there. Yes, that's it. We would want some assurance that. This place will be cleaned up with a timely fashion, sooner better than later, and that slope be stabilized, that we shouldn't have any concerns of any further erosion. Or anything else going forward once they, once they move out, so. With that being said, I applaud the idea that we can clean that up. With that being said, I applaud the idea that we can clean that up. A lot of sauce, I guess. Shouldn't have any problem finding a place to bring it home. And they moved it in. Just hope they can find a place to move it out just as quickly as they moved it in. I don't have anything more to say. I appreciate all the time that you've given us. It's a lot of work.
Move online. I'm sorry that the video keeps falling out of the shut off. So my wife share.
Yeah, so we're doing Michael Bella representing the Red Club in six sixty Chamber of Highway. I, oh no, see, I've been going through this place for the past twenty years. I've been a member there since recently. There've been a lot of excavation going on there. I know these guys got their stuff in there. I don't really have a quarrel with them, but I'm really concerned about the material in there. It's been brought in. There's been a lot of material brought in as far as contamination. Got a couple of weapons with this guy ready for his, our property. It really has something to do with the matter, but as far as dirt bikes and stuff going on our property, I know. It's put some stuff up and we got on camera destroying some trees and, but obviously he's moving out. He's going to subdivide this. I'm just worried about then he's slow running, he's going to be contaminated or not to affect our well for our clubhouse. That's my main concern.
Sorry, I'm having trouble.
We're behind now.
Yeah, you're right down here.
I got. That's right with his pen is, oh, don't down, down here. That's our clubhouse. We've been there. Folks been there since nineteen thirty nine.
And we don't have any control over any sales brought in, but Department of Fire and Protection can answer those kind of questions. I know that they're very vigilant with regards to soil that's excavated and
Okay.
Have to be removed.
Yeah, I don't know. I, that's something that was just concerned.
Probably with a lot of that stuff, you know, like crack the oil tanks, stuff like that. Soil contaminated, they have to move it out. They usually have to bring it to Massachusetts or somewhere, but I mean, in a situation like that where you see contamination or suspect any of them like that, then you have to probably get over the, the, the.
Okay.
Uh, we can't answer.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't want to be the bad member or anything. I got no, this guy, I'm sure he's doing what he's going to do. You know, we're trying a lot of business. I understand that. I'm just, just concerned. That's all.
Zoning does have regulations that we got to fill and exclamation and and so for instance, when you didn't fail around to keep it guys does require an initial approval, but there's also, we have a environmental section of regulations.
Who you were, you have a, do we do that as well?
The zoning regulations have a section on environmental, which includes fill and exclamation. The, they would provide us with data when required, when they hit the thresholds, we would require it as well as the state.
Yeah, that's probably.
Okay.
Yeah. Could be a problem. Find both doors. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Mr. Chairman, that was Mr. Bullock's request.
Sure.
Yeah, Mr. Bullock, he mentioned about stabilizing those bags and they are pretty steep, but it is our intention to stabilize them. We would have to bring, get a permit, so because that's going to require us to bring in, even if we subdivide those bags one way that will stabilize. We'll have to pull the appropriate permits. We just can't bring in without the appropriate permits. It'll probably be part of the subdivision process. So those bags, yeah, they will be stabilized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other comments, staff comments? I'll make the motion if you will. Absolutely, the motion to extend this application through the November meeting.
That meeting date again is November twenty second.
Around the fourth of September. And that time when we go there's the party. I want to see if that's a great one with the zoning board. Do we stipulate? Clean up progress? Right, we stipulate clean up progress, go on. This motion. We could. Because of what, what kind of agenda? I'm kind of looking to do. CEO.
I'm not sure you can stipulate that in a continuation motion. However, I believe you could indicate your desire to see forward progress in order to handle this at the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to the latest of the next meeting with the provision that we see some forward progress before that.
Second.
And again, it's continuation of the public hearing on the appeal to the November twenty second meeting, just for clarification, Court. Thank you. And the motion has been seconded, so.
Our favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, hi.
Hi.
Thank you, Hunter. Yes, we're heard.
Old business, I guess.
Thank you.
The application that we had the legislative discussion, ZBA twenty twenty two dash ninety seven, Prime Town Avenue twenty twenty two dash twelve. That nine one block twenty eight, block thirty one, they, they like the conclusion is requesting a file of case. Sales, alcohol, favors, incorporation, approval, the law, restaurant, cattle, or some extra loans on any relation with the estate property. This applicant has not shown up for a couple of meetings. So we're going to, I don't know how you could deny this application. If you want to have to apply again, be sure.
A second.
We have a motion made seconded. Any other discussion? If not, maybe Marvin, you can take a role.
I'm sorry, did that, was that motion denied without evidence?
Yes.
Okay. Chairman, thank you.
I.
Corey Wenzel.
I.
Ryan Zeller.
Hi.
And Tina. Uh-oh.
Hunter.
He's still probably got his church.
He's probably feeding chickens. So I didn't see him. Hunter.
He's just on.
Hunter, with Nina.
He voted on the.
Hunter, are you there? Kristen and Jordan.
To try texting it. Say, yeah, if it's connected, you may join. So hopefully it's not because it's on. Like I said, the house was without power, so.
Well, you may lost power and so on, and they, they were in trouble. It's a whole game. And liberate on it.
Can we already finish voting for anything?
Um, he said he's rejoined.
Second. I guess. No, I couldn't tell the other.
I don't know.
Should be good. It does take a while. You have to put your members to rejoin via telephone.
I'm like that.
Uh, I'll be around.
Just checking.
He has tried to. I feel like we moved that meeting.
Hunter, we are just voting on the application, ZBA twenty twenty two dash twelve regarding seven ninety seven Prime Town Avenue. And the motion was made to deny the application with, with, without prejudice. So that the applicant may be able to come back and apply again at ZBA. But he hasn't shown up for a couple of meetings, so we're just going to deny without prejudice, and we have a motion made for that approved by three people who would be your vote.
I, I'm in agreement. Hi. I'm in agreement with you.
I'm quote, that's denied without prejudice. ZBA twenty twenty two dash oh nine, two sixty six Lower Lane, at fifteen dash two, block ninety one, block seventy. Joseph Graniello is appealing for Vermont zoning regulation fifteen eighty one. The determination of a town plan slash zoning enforcement officer regarding number of dwelling even permitted at the existing house in the R eleven town. Opens on six twenty eight twenty two, continued from seven nineteen twenty two and nine twenty seven twenty two meetings. Or a motion to accrue this appeal, accrue, accrue this appeal.
So you're either, you're either overwhealing or reversing the decision of the CEO or you're not holding it.
Okay, I have a motion to uphold the decision of the zoning enforcement officer. So moved, motion to uphold the design decision.
Yes, you. My CEO, it's your decision that's being appealed. That's why I made a motion to uphold the decision.
Is there a motion? Is there a second on the motion?
Just a reminder that you need to state collective reasons for your action pursuant to statute. That's what it is.
We have a motion to approve, uphold zoning enforcement officer's decision with regard to two sixty six Lower Lane. Motion was made to uphold it. So I have a second. You call for motion to deny or to overrule.
Do you wish to withdraw your motion?
I wish to withdraw my motion. A motion on two sixty six Lower Lane. That I move that we, I have, no, I do not. Well, we would be at a stance of illness. Well, we either move to uphold or deny. I move to uphold. If other members feel differently than that, that one of you should move to deny, to overrule.
I'll make a motion to overrule the zoning enforcement officer's determination.
And we got a second on that motion.
So there's a motion to overrule or reverse the decision of the CEO. And Mr. Zeller. Would it, would it be helpful for me at all to give me my control direction with regard to abandonment? Do you want to hear that comments versus trip language? Is that helpful?
Sure.
Do that.
If we're, I was telling.
So I typically have advised you with regard to non-conformity, I cite, I, I did just pull it up. I typically give you the following instruction, that the site wing versus zoning board of appeals of the town of Cromwell and the Cumberland Farms, they were strictly for appeals.
Hunter, that, that used to be, I'm sorry, the mic's off, of course. Yeah, I'm sorry. I know I'm not saying that, but.
I apologize, Hunter. Is that better?
Yeah, I can, I, I can hear now. I just couldn't follow what was happening with the two, with the two conflicting motions. I, I kept cutting out, so I'm not sure where, where we are right now on that.
Okay, so and I think I last used this for the visual matter, but in Wayne versus zoning board of appeals of Cromwell, the appellate court noted the following with respect to the necessary analysis of claim non-conforming use. Non-conforming use is Maryland existing use that continue, which is authorized by zoning regulations. The citation is Tomalney versus zoning board of appeals, one fifty eight, common five sixteen, five nineteen, and nineteen sixty nine. Supreme Court case. To be a non-conforming use, use must be actual, is not enough that it be a contemplated use, nor that the property was brought for a particular use, the property must be so utilized as to be irremotably committed to that use. Citation to Lebanon Woods, one fifty three, common one eighty two, one ninety seven, nineteen sixty five, Supreme Court case. To be irremotably committed to a particular use, there must have been a significant amount of preliminary preparatory work done on the property prior to the enactment of zoning regulations. Unequivocally indicates that the property is going to be used for that particular purpose. Citing calls versus Alexander Realty Corporation, one seventy nine, common three ninety, three ninety nine, nineteen eighty, Supreme Court case. And then shortly thereafter, the matter of Cumberland Farms, Inc., which is zoning board of appeals in the town of Woodstock. Citing that is seventy four, common app six twenty two, pages six twenty seven to six thirty two, two thousand and three, connecting a former court case for which certification was denied. The appellate court reviewed and reversed the trial court decisions standing in appeal, the decision by Westbrook CPA to uphold the cease and desist order issued by the Westbrook CEO concerning an alleged pre-existing non-conform use of the gasoline station. During the appellate court, Chief Justice Laigre, at that time, wrote general statutes eight dash two A provides in relevant part that zoning regulations shall not prohibit continuance of any non-conforming use of building or structure consisting at the time of the adoption of such regulations. Such regulations show Such regulations shall not provide for the termination of any non-conforming use solely as a result of non-use for a specified period of time, without regard to the entirety of the property or to name in that use. A non-conformity has been defined as a user structure that is prohibited by the zoning regulations, but is permitted because of its existence at the time that the regulations were adopted. And the citation is the Alson versus zoning board of appeals, two oh five, con seven three seven ten, nineteen eighty eight, nineteen Supreme Court case. For a use to be considered non-conforming, that use must possess two characteristics. First, it must be lawful, and second, it must be in existence at the time with the zoning regulation making use non-conforming was enacted. But the citation is to Cummings versus Trump, two oh four, con sixty seven, ninety one to ninety two, nineteen eighty seven, Supreme Court case. Parting cleaning the benefit of a non-conforming use bears the burden of proving. That the non-conforming use is valid, cited adequate resources for covering authority versus earnings, only commission, two forty five, con seven three one, seven forty four, and to maybe three, it's Supreme Court case. Abandonment is a question of fact, which implies involuntary and intentional renunciation. Nevertheless, the intent to abandon may be inferred as a fact from the circumstances, the mere discontinuance of the use, where there is no intent to abandon, is not enough. To establish abandonment, the intention of the party owner must be to relinquish permanently the non-conforming use. Because the conclusion asked of the intention of the landlord, it's an inflexive fact, it is not reviewable, unless it is ruled to trial or not, it is a debate. And that the site is Cummings versus Trump, two oh four, on education, I mean, free. So. Again, you've heard me repeat this language many times during the course of my presentation with the board. I hope that gives you some direction, you appear to be at a minimum in the past. So the claim again, the. Pardon, is that the use was pre-existing, it redated. The, the adoption of the zoning regulations, because it goes back many years, the property was built in nineteen forty, it was built in nineteen forty. And then, so you heard what argument they made with regard to that, and their position on. The abandoned analysis that was provided by the CEO.
So I, I have a question.
Of course.
In this letter, exhibit twenty one.
That is the, the. Letter that was written by Mr. Juisty, yes.
Yeah, and this, just a clarification. This letter's. Pretty much states that this was abandoned. Or doesn't say that it was abandoned, but. But based on what? Attorney Capola just read, is that. Fact abandoned? Or is it? I guess I'm a little bit confused, and I apologize.
It's okay, ask whatever question, and I'll try to guide you, as much as I can.
Well, you said that it was, the property is used as abandoned. But it's not really abandoned physically. That, that's still not performing use, that's what I got out of that, but that does make me a bit confused.
Say that again.
The. They're saying that the use was abandoned. In this letter.
That's the position that the CEO was speaking.
Yeah, the use was abandoned, but, and, and, and actuality, it was not abandoned. Or, or, in actuality, I guess, this one. In actuality, it was not abandoned, it was still being used as a free family.
And, and that is the position that that input has taken.
So basically.
It's been ongoing.
It's been ongoing, so they, the appellate said, then you went.
So they're saying that they are entitled to the protection of the law as a, as a pre-existing non-conforming use, that the use was not abandoned. With the submission of that subdivision application, non-conformity subdivision application by the local zoning commission, again, dating back to eighteen ninety.
Okay, I, I think I got you. But if that's the case, if that particular cases of, you know. Is it for the model, or, you know.
Again, I think the language is instructive. And I'll say it again, abandonment is a question of fact, which implies a voluntary and intentional pronunciation. Nevertheless, the intent to abandon may be inferred as a fact from the circumstances, the mere discontinuance of the use, where there is no intent to abandon, is not enough. To establish abandonment, the intention of the party owner must be to relinquish permanently the non-conforming use.
That was not relinquished, I guess, to put out, thank you.
That's what you're debating, deliberating on, it's an issue.
And the side of the coin, on, on in my thinking, is that the, the. Under the circumstances, the intent was shown with. Planning and zoning, site plan for the subdivision, assistant with the staff position. That the owners at that time. Through their own, you know, diligence expectation, but you know, when I read the owners' property was expressed and abandoned. You know, I, I, I kind of leave me hanging like, I get into the breeze, and I'm like, oh, what, you know, I'm kind of dumb. And I'm not a lawyer. I, you know.
This decision is yours, and, you know, I can only guide you on one of the lines, and.
If that's the case, if that's the case, I mean, I want to, I'll make a motion. Based on that, I don't, any other question, Hunter, do you have any question? He's still there?
Yeah, he's.
I do not have any questions.
You were able to hear the conversation.
Yeah, yes, after whatever was moved or changed, I was able to hear better.
That being the case, I, I, I mean, I, I can make a motion to overturn the zoning enforcement officer's decision.
Hey, Tony, we have a motion, Ryan made a motion, it needs a second.
It had, no, one second.
Well, I, I can second Ryan's motion at this point, I guess.
So again, that is a motion to overturn or reverse the CEO's action. That has been seconded. So, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion made and seconded. Marvin, can you take the roll?
I can take the roll.
Oh, you can take the roll.
And I think that's appropriate to do that.
Yes.
Frank Langella?
I.
Ryan Zeller?
Hi.
Corey White side?
Right.
And Hunter Mathina?
Hi.
Um, the, the motion to overturn or reverse the CEO's decision. Did not carry, because the statute does require four members to reverse the decision. And that, that statute is section eight dash seven of the Committee on General Statutes. Which states that a concurrent level of four members of the zoning board of appeals shall be necessary to reverse any order or requirement for decision of the official charge for the enforcement of zoning regulations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie, so open her. Application. ZBA twenty twenty two dash fifteen dash. Twenty twenty two dash fifteen, zero Chamber of Highway, at fourteen dash one, block twelve, block thirteen. And Mures Karwowski, dealing in brown money regulations. Fourteen, sixteen A one, and the order of zoning enforcement officer, getting commercial vehicles equipped and available, residential property, now twenty one, so. I'll make a motion. To continue on. Please. I'll wait until you're all right, publicly hearing, all right. As far as adjournment, I think. I'll say that, we got, okay, court's second, all favor?
Hi. Thanks, Hunter.
Thanks, Hunter.
You got power back yet?
Thanks, guys. Not yet, they're, they're out there working on it.
Thank you for joining.
It's gonna be, I'll see you in court. My interest that I want.